All right, good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is February 28, 2023, and it's 7:02 PM. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
Uh, Councilman Chagri.
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
We are present.
Councilman Hassan.
Present.
Uh, Councilman Rafai is not present, and Councilwoman Jakowski is not present. Mirgala, present, if you have a form.
Thank you. Praise for the United Nations. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the citizens of America, and to the Constitution of the United States, where we stand, one nation, united in its own right. All right. Do we have any community announcements?
Mr. Mayor, I did post one on the agenda here about the order of review announcement. The assessing department mailed a 2023 notice of assessment and all the information's on there. They're going to be doing here in the council chambers. If anyone wants to reference the website or if you wanted to take a peek.
Any other announcements? All right, we will move to the proclamations, recognitions, and presentations. And the first one is presentation preliminary Joe Louis Greenway route options between Holbrook and Kniff.
Mr. Mayor, we have our contractor with us today. There's a nice PowerPoint that our clerk is going to be bringing up to go through some of the thoughts and an overview of, for the most part, between Holbrook to Kniff. I'm sorry, yeah, Holbrook to Kniff at this point.
Hi, my name's Cassie Mydl. I'm with Spalding D. Decker, a civil engineering, surveying, and planning firm. We are recently contracted under a small SEMCOG planning grant that you passed in December to advance early concept.
You're good.
Okay. Early concept development, early concept material, and really create materials for future public meetings and a full public engagement process related to the Joe Louis Greenway route. And so that would need images, maps, markups, and graphic renderings. I'm here tonight to provide some information about what I've heard so far about the Joe Louis Greenway and the Hamtramck Alley project, and then discuss the route in passing. What I've brought with me shares what in the one pager, two page, well, three pager in part of you, shares what the Joe Louis Greenway is, the route history that I've heard, and then preliminary comparison of route options. The Joe Louis Greenway is a 27 and 1/2 mile planned recreational pathway that connects Hamtramck, Highland Park, Dearborn, and Detroit. There's a map on the first page that shows the full loop. So that's the official Joe Louis Greenway route and the whole loop between multiple communities that connect multiple communities. It is estimated, early estimations, were about a $240 million total project, and that's for various off-road, so like pathway not on a street segments, as well as bike lanes which are on road and other special areas to connect. It's a state priority. $143 million has been publicly committed to the project so far. Various funding sources include the city of Detroit, Duane County, private philanthropy, the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation, and then $60 million in 2022 from the state of Michigan and $40 million in 2023 from the state of Michigan. Most recently, the Detroit Riverfront Conservancy, which manages the Dequender Cut, if you're familiar, in Detroit and the riverfront, has teamed up with the Joe Louis Greenway Partnership, which is a different nonprofit that was established for the route to form a new organization, the Unified Greenway Partnership. And they have committed to raising $350 million for the Joe Louis Greenway, which includes not just construction, but also maintenance moving forward. So the reason I bring up the funding, you know, the significance of that is it's a state priority. They're becoming more organized. And the way that they're looking at the route is that we're all in this together, right? It's not one community in this alone and solely responsible for funding portions of it. The city of Detroit has been leading planning, you know, fundraising to date with the intention of creating funding opportunities for all Joe Louis Greenway cities. They did fund a, they being Detroit, funded a framework plan which was released in 2021. And then that has also led to these larger organizations being formed. Now, in the past, what I heard, there may have been some community coordination with officials here at Hamtramck, business owners, community members. But these people may not have, they may not be in the same positions today, and recent sentiment isn't, hasn't been heard. And that is where the like, we're doing this work to prepare for a whole, you know, public engagement process and future meetings. So this isn't, this isn't an end point. This is more of the beginning point of how we can all work together. What I heard, and this is part of what's in the framework plan as well, is that Joseph Campo was considered to be the route considering the connection to Detroit right on Carpenter and to the south, you know, around the curve into Detroit as well. And that that connection brings the most economic, you know, benefit for downtown Hamtramck. Now, that's what I've heard, and that's what's in the framework plan. But really, and then the other piece was that businesses voiced a preference for a route that would not require reconstructing segments from Holbrook to Kniff because it wouldn't fit right now with the recent streetscape work because that would affect the parking and they'd have to live through another construction process. So that's what's been shared from Smith Group, another firm who worked on the project and did the framework plans, and the city of Detroit so far. Now, the other piece was that tax funding for bike lanes on Joseph Campo was secured about 2017, and that construction is now complete. So that's the connection to the southern, at the southern end of the route. Now, after reviewing community engagement notes, interviews, previous studies, and materials, what I'd like to do today is discuss the route options, which coordinate with the map on the next page. So this one's a little more difficult to share on screen, but.
This one or the next one?
Because it's both pages.
Both of them, okay.
We have some printed. So we can start with the Campo and West Alley route, which is the route that's included in the framework plan, which segments of that plan were included in your packet as well. Now, the route would be coming up the bike lanes that currently exist on Joseph Campo from the south and then crossing to the West Alley of Joseph Campo to continue up to Kniff and then reconnecting with, you know, on Joseph Campo to go north. The opportunity there is that it would bring, right, it aligns with the goal of bringing people into the downtown to support businesses. In the long term, there's an opportunity to activate the alley with murals, beautification, more pedestrians, and also the streetscape and beautification north of Kniff as well. It would be the official route, right? Now, the challenge, which is what we have to address in this process, is how do we share, how do we design that alley to be a shared space for walkers, businesses, bicyclists, and really garbage, right? Like waste management and deliveries, the businesses' deliveries and other needs. And there are concerns about numerous intersections across the alley that would make it unsafe for commuters. So those are challenges. Those are things that we could work through, that we would have to work through for this route option. I also included some construction estimates at the bottom. They are very, very preliminary and come from the framework plan estimates, but at least give something to compare. Now, the second option would be to come up Joseph Campo, have the West Alley really for pedestrians, prioritize for pedestrians as part of the Joe Louis Greenway route. But concerns have been raised, right, about fast cyclists going through the alley, especially those that are coming to the Joe Louis Greenway route to ride it, right? They're the ones going 15 to 22 miles an hour. They're really there to ride. And if that would create safety concerns there, or likely if they're the type that would just stay on Joseph Campo, which would be tight for cyclists, there's not a lot of extra space there for cars that are parked down the street, then what about giving them like a fast route bike lane option down one of the other streets, Lumpkin or.
Bromback.
Thank you. Or Bromback. Now, those are fire routes, but it gives a fast bike lane route option. Now, the opportunity is that it would be separating your commuter, fast cyclists, and pedestrians, would reduce some of the alley congestion, and you would extend the benefits of the Joe Louis Greenway to some of the other residential areas by having people pass through. And that could also be a route that connects libraries, schools, mosques, churches, and other non-downtown businesses. The challenge would be the complex intersections with, you know, Holbrook and Kniff, and then additional stakeholder coordination. So now you're talking about residential areas more so than just the business areas on Joseph Campo. And construction estimate probably a little higher. Now, you're adding additional bike lanes on other streets. The third option would be the getting off of Joseph Campo on Kniff over to Lumpkin and McKay as the official route. Now, it would be bypassing this section of congestion, and it would avoid the alley complexity, potentially less of a parking or business disruption. But it also doesn't achieve the goals that the Joe Louis Greenway project and cities have come together, you know, to achieve, which is bringing people to downtown businesses, connecting residents to the most active areas of communities. And this route would not prioritize funding for the Joe Louis Greenway route to other, to your downtown streetscape projects, which have previously been expressed as, you know, a desire to activate the alleys and the streetscape. And realistically, that's a much longer pathway of on-street bike lanes, so wouldn't necessarily be a funding savings.
Okay, got it. So we have some business owners here that came, you know, protesting, you know, this Greenway because they are saying it's hurting their businesses. And we are in Hamtramck, as you know, we are a small, tight city, narrow space, limited parking spaces. And this one came and took out some spaces and parking spot. So we have a lot of business owners here that I can see they came tonight to speak about that. I don't know if there is a solution.
So I can talk a little bit about that, Mr. Mayor. So this project, as we stated, has been an ongoing project for a really long time. I mean, the grant that we have to pay for the services that they're providing here alone came all the way from 2017. So, and it goes back much further than that. We're here today for the presentation to pretty much talk about Holbrook North and how we're going to handle that. We already have Holbrook South, but that doesn't mean we're done with it neither. My hope is today that you would appoint a subcommittee or get a couple volunteers from council that can continue the conversations with our contractor for Holbrook North to decide what's best for the community, whether it goes up Joseph Campo Alley, Verzoff completely goes up Lumpkin, or to what end, to where it goes, and to what we as a city envision you as councilman on behalf of our residents want it to do. That's the point of this presentation. In regards to the section that's already done, no one here in this room, I think, had any input into it whatsoever. None of our electeds, none of the administration, nobody. We realize that our business owners are taking exception with it because one day it just started coming and now it's here. I personally, along with the deputy city manager, met with multiple business owners just the other day in regards to this, along with our community economic development went out there the other day as well. And we're brainstorming ideas of what we can do to alleviate some of the concerns. The main concern that we see at this point is parking. And there's a couple of steps that looks to be taking right now. We're probably going to put some 30-minute parking signs out there to help get some turnover for the businesses, specifically for the market, which we know is kind of an in-and-out business, and specifically for the restaurants that want some carryout business. And we're looking at doing some parking strictly for the businesses as well, maybe some designated. As far as moving the Greenway, that would be a long-term solution, but not necessarily out of the question. But we're going to have to have a lot of conversations with people and do a lot more planning. It's not something that could happen overnight. But we are going to have those conversations, and hopefully we can come up with something in that section that'll work for everyone moving forward. But tonight, as far as we're concerned here, we're looking to see what we're going to do moving forward north of Holbrook. And we're excited about it because there's a lot of opportunity here. As stated, there is a ton of funding for this, which doesn't necessarily mean it's just bike paths. I mean, we potentially could redo our whole cityscape if we do this correctly. There's a lot of planning that needs to be done, a lot of conceptual drawings that need to be done. And we think we can go after a lot of money to potentially even redo infrastructure along with bike lanes. So for now, it's what we have. But we're hoping with council's help to get some solid plans in place and move forward from there.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Okay, so all those plans through a square mile, trying to bring million, million dollar, it's not going to help some of the point, no businessmen, nothing. So we're not going to discuss, we already spent 20 minutes for this one. We're going to make the subcommittee and community leaders and businessmen, they will discuss that one further.
Yeah, I will have to talk to council members individually and see who's interested because there are sometimes that we take quick decisions and then some people back up. So I'll have individual conversations with you guys and then I'll.
We'll come back to you.
Mr. Mayor, if there is some business owners that are going to listen to their concern maybe?
Not right now.
No, it's not.
Come back again. They can talk in the.
Later.
They can make a couple of. All right, thank you so much. The next report is the 2022 annual report for the city clerk.
Hello. You guys mind if I stay sitting? Just because I don't want my back to the camera.
You're okay.
Okay, thank you. Oh, great, Greg, hold on. Greg's zooming in. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, council mayor, our new city manager. I appreciate everybody's input and everything. I enjoy working here. I love the city, and I appreciate the opportunity. So this is the 2022 annual report. First, I'm going to discuss business licenses. Within Hamtramck's tight-knit two-square mile is a constantly shifting and evolving business community. Businesses with experienced owners and a dedicated customer base continue to thrive post-pandemic. 2022 saw an increase in local entrepreneurs who found new opportunities to invest in the city and build up their brand, surely inspired by the city's changing demographics and a growing demand for new, fresh ideas. In 2022, a total of 128 new business license applications were filed within our office, with this which is surprisingly down from the 159 businesses who filed in 2021. This number includes brand-new businesses as well as any changes of ownership within an existing business. As of February 2023, 121 of those businesses are still active and operating. According to our records, a majority of the new businesses opened during 2022 were residential, commercial, or mixed-use property ownership companies. And that's one of the reasons is because we were trying to tackle in the past couple years getting those business licenses for those landlords and tenants, landlords and business owners. So we've been pushing those, and we've had a lot of those come in and apply for business licenses. A total of 545 business licenses were issued, with 497 of those licenses being from the 2022-23 business license year. According to our business license software, 61 businesses were terminated at some point throughout 2022, which is down from the 80 businesses terminated in 2021. As for elections, you all know that we passed Arabic on our ballots this past year. So we had a successful August and November election with three languages, successful with only two and a half employees in the clerk's office. So I got to give a round of applause to my Abe Sablani, my deputy, and our election clerk, Barry Malsoul, for all their amazing work at the clerk's office. In 2022, the city of Hamtramck continued its growth in the number of registered voters. The city registered 1,345 new voters in 2021. There are currently, in 2022, there are currently 4,971 voters listed as permanent absentee voters, voters who wish to be sent an application for the absentee voter ballot automatically each election, which that is changing due to proposal two being passed in the November election. I was currently at an election seminar today discussing all these changes. And to let you guys know, a heads up, these changes are going to be expensive, especially with having three languages on our ballots in our elections. New machines, nine days early voting. They're trying to get rid of applications for the absentee voters. So whoever is on the permanent list automatically gets a ballot without filling out the application, which causes an issue for us having three languages because our applications to vote, my intention was to have a three-language application, not application for, application for AV ballot. With this said, if we're sending everybody a ballot not knowing which language is preferred, it's going to make a little bit difficult for Hamtramck to pursue this. So the state doesn't even know what we're doing with one language, let alone three languages. So that's why early voting isn't starting until the new February primary next year for the presidential election. So we're waiting to get more feedback from the Bureau of Elections in Michigan. These voters account for approximately 35% of registered voters in the city. The total number of voters is 4,107 in Hamtramck. There were two.
14.
I'm sorry, what did I say? Oh, I apologize. 14,107. There were 2,122 voters who participated in the 2022 state primary election. In the primary election, 1,301 voters requested that they were sent absentee ballots in the 22 primary election, and 1,114 of these ballots were returned for counting. 13 of these AV ballots were canceled for rejected or rejected due to voter moving, new jurisdiction, being reported as deceased or prior to election day. During the state general election, there were 4,516 voters who participated in that election. 2,100, excuse me, 2,119 voters requested and were sent absentee ballots in the general election, and 1,893 of these ballots were returned for counting. 17 of these ballots were canceled either for rejection due to voter moving to a new jurisdiction being reported deceased before the election day. Our office continues to refine our procedures, particular to areas of language assistance for voters who speak Arabic and Bangla. In 2022, our office provided not only Bangla language ballots as required by the law, but also Arabic language ballots for voters who requested them to meet council's goal established in 2021. Additionally, the voters of the state of Michigan adopted proposal two, bringing changes to the state election system. These requirements will result in additional spending for staffing due to the increased activity laid out in the law. Items at the clerk's office will be addressing as required. Like I said, there'll be a nine-day early voting period. Military and overseas ballots will be counted if postmarked by or on election day. So they're figuring out how to close out the election if we're still going to count ballots that come in late in the mail, if they're postdated before the election. Securing polling places and preventing intimidating or harassing behaviors inside and in the vicinity of them, as well as continuing to provide a voting opportunity absent practices that have the intent or effect of denying, abridging, interfering with, or unreasonably burdening the fundamental right to vote. We are currently awaiting guidance from the Secretary of State Office as well as the Wayne County Bureau of Elections to guide our implementations of these requirements. Last year in 2022, we had 132 FOIA requests through the clerk's office, and the council brought through 163 resolutions, and we had a total of 10 public hearings. And that's in a nutshell. Any questions?
Which one is the, your fish question? No one here is doing.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm hoping to push that to the next meeting. The presenter got called into work last minute.
Did you have to remove that on additions and deletions?
It's just proclamation.
Okay.
All right, so the next one is the 2022 annual report for the building department.
Mr. Mayor, we have John Jackson from McKenna here to present.
Good evening, council members, and thanks for the opportunity to come in and speak with you tonight. We have a very committed team of professionals in the building department. Maybe you know Laura Gray and Renata White, who are the faces at the counter in the building department. And we continue to make progress in terms of trying to provide a high level of customer service to the residents and the businesses of Hamtramck, helping them navigate what is often a very intimidating and challenging process of making sure that their buildings are safe to live in, safe for their customers, and safe for them to conduct business in. But at the end of the day, that's the goal of the building department, is to make sure that people are safe in the buildings here in Hamtramck. So a quick update of last year's activities. The number of building permits was up over last year by approximately 85 permits from about 1,526 permits last year and 1,610 permits this year. So that's the level of activity we've seen over the last two years, which is a significant increase over 2019, 2020, where we were down significantly due to COVID. We've had a couple of large projects, 11347 Joseph Campo, 10200 Konick, and 8801 Konick, were commercial projects that resulted in a significant amount of investment in the city of Hamtramck in the process of being reviewed and finalized. With respect to the division of projects, approximately 90% of the permits were people investing in residential buildings in Hamtramck. 10% of the permits, the number of permits, were dedicated to commercial projects. In terms of the fees collected, you can see on the chart here on the right, the fees collected by the city in 2022 was $410,000, which was, again, a little bit over what was collected last year and again, significantly over what was collected in previous years, again, due to COVID. The next page shows basically a GIS map of where the permits, commercial and residential permits, were issued. We think that this ability to track these on GIS helps you to see where investment is incurring and maybe where it's not incurring. And you can see here it's pretty well distributed around the city with respect to both residential and commercial. The next map here shows where the commercial permits were. And you can see, of course, they were primarily along the city's commercial corridors, Joseph Campo, Kniff, Holbrook, and Konick. So again, I think this is a useful tool to see where investment is happening in the city and seeing that the city's economic development policies are actually coming to fruition. One of the other services that the city provides is inspecting non-owner-occupied structures. And with this chart in the lower left-hand corner here shows that the number of new non-owner-occupied permits is down this year. And what that suggests to us is that we are starting to identify all of the rental properties in the city. Obviously, there's still more, but there's fewer and fewer rental properties being added to our inventory of rental properties that are inspected on a regular basis. We too in the building department have been working with the city to make sure that our application forms and so forth are accessible to people with a variety of languages in understanding. And so we've updated the building permit forms to reflect the different languages. In terms of the revenue generated by the non-owner-occupied permits and registrations, again, it reflects the number of registrations. It's down a little bit over last year, again, suggesting that there's a stabilization of non-owner-occupied units in the city. We continue to look at ways of making sure we identify all the non-owner-occupied buildings in the city. Again, it's important for the city and the people who live in these units for us to identify those so they can be inspected and make sure that they're safe for people to live in. So this chart here shows the total revenues generated by the city's building department. You can see overall, in 2022, the total revenue was $753,380 generated by the building department, which is up a little bit over 2021, where it was $714,048. Again, a marked increase over and above the two previous years. And one thing I'd point out, given the drastic fluctuation between those years and the last two years, is the city has been able to maintain the same level of service in the building department. There are no long delays for permits, no long delays for inspections. All of that is happening on a timely basis, which is critical when the city is trying to encourage investment in the community. One of the other services that we provide is code enforcement. No one likes code enforcement, right? Who? Everyone hates code enforcement. But again, it's important in terms of going out and making sure that the city's building stock is well-maintained. Our role in code enforcement is primarily around the buildings. You have other code enforcement professionals here that look outside the building at property-related issues. But this chart shows that, again, our major focus has been on identifying rental programs and people doing building activities without permits, fees that are owed, vacant property registration, and so on. So again, we're out there making sure that people are living and conducting business in buildings that meet the minimum safety standards of the state and the communities. This next page basically shows that we continue to be committed to helping people through this process, as I mentioned in the beginning. One of the things that we've done is we've partnered with the city in obtaining the BSNA module that allows people to pay their permit fees online, so they don't have to come into the community, into the city hall to pay. Makes it easier for them to make their payments. It lightens up the amount of traffic at the counter so we can spend more time answering questions for people who are, again, looking to do projects and that sort of thing. So there's been a lot of improvements over the last couple of years. We continue to look at improvements in terms of the systems, both in the building department and how we work closely with the city's community and economic development department. I know some of your staff is currently on leave right now, so we've been fortunate to be able to provide a sort of an interim replacement in the department to make sure nothing falls through the cracks. Before that leave, we were having meetings with the community economic development department to streamline the process of investment, all the way from when someone comes in kicking the tires to see what the zoning ordinance allows, what the city wants to see in terms of redevelopment, reinvestment in the community, all the way from that point, all the way to when they get their certificate of occupancy through the building department. It's sort of a long road, but we've definitely been committed to making that process as smooth as possible. And I would definitely like to give a shout out to our whole team. I mentioned Laura and Renata, but we also have, you know, four inspectors there on a regular basis, day in and day out, as well as a building official there two or three days a week to make sure that we have answers for people looking to invest in the city of Hamtramck. Thank you.
Point of order, I think Renata was right earlier here. You're supposed to do a motion to postpone the.
Presentation?
Yeah.
The presentation?
Yeah.
I'm making motion, also.
All good?
Aye. Thank you. All right, the next one is the proclamation for Women's History Month. Would that be read out, please?
City of Hamtramck proclamation in recognition of Women's History Month. Whereas Hamtramck women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our city, state, and nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas Hamtramck women have played and continue to play critical political, economic, cultural, and social roles by constituting a significant portion of our labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas in Hamtramck, women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force, and when called upon and manufacturing, I'm sorry, and when called upon, the manufacturing labor force. And whereas women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in Hamtramck and across the country. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement since the United States of America was founded. And whereas women have and continue to serve our country courageously in the military. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hamtramck that March is designated as Women's History Month and call upon the people and institutions of the city to observe March as Women's History Month annually with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Signed, Mayor Amergalib.
Thank you. The next one is. Next one is the proclamation opposing military aid to all repressive governments around the world. And nobody wants to read that, I'll go ahead and read it. So people, I read it, a lot of, there was a lot of tension around this, and, you know, it was introduced by, for just transparency, because I keep getting calls from members of the community to explain, thinking that we are doing stuff that are unnecessary. I think we have done proclamations before for Ukraine, we have done for Poland, for Yemen, for Bangladesh, and this is for Palestine. So I unfortunately tried to modify the language, bring a compromise between the two sides of the council, but it didn't work out to accomplish our goal of maintaining peace and, you know, removing tension from the council. So at the end, we stick to our values and three things we cannot bargain about or trade with anything else, I personally. Three X that I keep always saying, faith, family, and freedom. Freedom, when we say freedom, not only my personal freedom, but every nation is freedom around the world, every individual is freedom. We support freedom of every nation to live free of occupation and free of repression and persecution. So this proclamation, I'll read it. City of Hamtramck proclamation opposing military aid to all repressive governments. Whereas the city of Hamtramck recognizes the right of every country and every person to exist in peace and security. And whereas the city of Hamtramck believes that the Palestinian people should enjoy the right of self-determination that comes with having a free, peaceful, and secure homeland for their own. And whereas the city of Hamtramck stands the gayest occupation of any country and support the right of every occupied nation to gain freedom, sovereignty, and independence. And whereas the United States military aid to foreign government has enriched defense contractors at the expense of struggling cities like Hamtramck while threatening the safety and security of people all around the world. And now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of city of Hamtramck oppose military aid to all repressive governments around the world.